You're reading the information packet thinking what a refreshing change it must be for the Board of Health to be passing judgment on beavers and muskrats.
My computer says seven, shall we begin? Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law general laws, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort we've made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view or listen to the proceedings while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and meeting notice. All votes subject to a remote participation, therefore will be roll call votes. Everybody is reminded that we are recording this and we have present select board members, Michael Markucci, Gustav Murby, and Ozler Peterson. And we'd like to start with a moment of appreciation for our troops who are serving around the world. So let's do that, please. Thank you. I don't know, as I say, my mind always goes to Afghanistan, although I suppose we're supposed to be out of there soon, so maybe that's not the right place to have my mind. So we need to start this evening with a reorganization of the select board. Do we have any motions?
So I guess I would move that we elect me as chairman of the Board of Selectmen and Gustav H. Murby as clerk and Ozler Peterson as third member.
Second.
Sounds awfully self-serving.
It's a cool.
I I I view it, I view it more as a heroic act.
You could have made the motion there, Pete, but all right, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby.
Hi.
And Mr. Markucci, I, there we go, I have officially seized the reins. Now where is the mute button? Where do I get the big mute button? All right.
As I recall, as I recall, Mike actually did immediately make the motion last time we went through the cycle. After he stepped down from the chairman, I recall it hit me so fast, I didn't realize it was on the agenda. And
Well, usually that is the person with the biggest incentive to reorganize the board is the outgoing chairman. I did want to start by the Markucci administration as chairman of the board by congratulating Pete on his reelection to the to the Board of Selectmen. I also want to congratulate Marion Binaldi, our newly elected town clerk, and extend thanks and appreciation to interim town clerk, Jim Mullen, for his efforts over the course of the last year. I think we benefited a lot from his experience as we navigated a pandemic town election, a pandemic town meeting, a pandemic presidential election with enormous turnout, and we're we're grateful grateful to him. I also want to congratulate Scott McDermott on his reelection as town moderator. Whenever I see his name on the ballot, I'm reminded of the story that Scott has told the and has probably told all of you as well involving our former town clerk Carol Mayer and Scott went and acquired once of Carol as to whether anyone else was running for town moderator and Carol responded, who else would want it? So we're grateful to head. Mark Sorrell can probably relate to that, but but thank you to Scott and congratulations to Mike Rose, our new town assessor. And thank you to Tom Sweeney for his service in the Board of Assessors for a number of years. Tom also ran a very spirited writing campaign for that seat in the Board of Assessors. He got a lot of votes for write-in, maybe the most I've recalled from a writing campaign in my experience in town, and I think that's a measure of the respect that people have for Tom and all of the service to the town, which I'm sure will continue. Congratulations to Leo Bremm on his reelection to the school committee. And with thanks to Lauren Littlegrin and Robert Worth for their campaigns as well. It's not easy to put your name on the ballot for office, especially in these circumstances. And congratulations to our new library trustees Jessica Raza and Kirsten Cole, to our reelected Park Commissioner and First Gentleman of the Warrant Committee, Rob Tetro. Congratulations to Lisa Donovan on her reelection to the Housing Authority and to Sarah Lemke and Seth Neen to their election of the Planning Board. And finally, Trust Fund Commissioner may be last on your ballots, but Mike Pastore is first in our hearts. So congratulations to Mike Pastore on his election as Trust Fund Commissioner. So with those congratulations done and well deserved, everybody won and ran.
Mike, on behalf of all candidates, I'll say thank you.
You're welcome. And finally, as as secondary, thanks to Jim and everybody who ran the election. The election went very smoothly. Again, I I think I've been amazed each time I've gone to vote in the circumstances of the last year, how well it's gone and seemed like the protocols were in place, everybody was safe and fine and everything went well. And so it was a testament to our democracy once again. So thank you to Jim. All right. Appointments, potential votes. Number one, Town Administrator Christian Truella requests us to appoint Mark Bryson as Veteran Service Officer for the Town of Medfield.
Mark, so that you can meet him. As you know, back in 2018, the Board of Selectmen voted to adopt an inter-municipal agreement with the Town of Walpole. And so that we share a veteran service officer, we have our district between the two towns. John Kogan, as you remember, was our former veteran service officer who had to leave us back in the fall, and we have recently gone through the hiring process with Town of Walpole and Mark Bryson. I'm pleased to present to you as our new veteran service officer. According to chapter 115, both Boards of Selectmen must appoint Mark so that he can start working and in full disclosure, we've already had him working on a few cases for us and bringing him up to speed, so. Mark, are you there?
Yes, I am. Oh, there it is. So with that, oh geez, I thought, better on the other camera. Good, good evening, everyone. Hi, my name is Mark Bryson and I'm just in the new BSO for the Town of Walpole and also for Medfield. I'd like to thank everyone for welcoming this evening. Of course, I got a lot to learn. I'm actually in the process now of actually going through a lot of the tutorials already online, so trying to myself prepare for this new role.
Terrific. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Gus, repeat, any questions?
No.
No.
Well, I gotta, I gotta ask Mark what branch he was in.
Actually, yes, I saw that. I was in the Navy, Seabees.
Okay.
I was stuck on wonderful California for four and a half years.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your service and and thank you for coming on board to serve our veterans as well.
And as an Army veteran, I will point out that my father was in the Navy and my fondest memories growing up was going to Quonset Point around Easter time where they always have the big CB sign. So that's close enough for me.
Well, for me, for me, I just, you know, I had, I enjoyed what I was doing. So a lot of people, you know, it depends on the experience, stuff like that. But I actually enjoyed what I was doing. So I, I was like, you know, all depends on what you're doing and the people you're around too. It makes it, you know, the team, the team itself is always good, I know, to have a good team environment. And that's one thing about, you know, when you are, you do serve, you do get used to working in a team environment and working with people. And that's one things I like to bring forth to any job I come to, you know, because I also now to work in a team environment and also be productive and making sure that the job's getting done.
Great.
Excellent.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
All right, this is the, this is my first one for this cycle here. This is high pressure. I move that we appoint Mark Bryson as the Veteran Service Officer for the Town of Medfield.
Second.
Roll call, Gus.
That's, yeah. The other part, I'm so, so focused on the motion. Let's see, Mr. Markucci.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Murby, aye. Thanks, Mark.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you very much, Mr. Bryson. Good to have you.
Thank you.
Someday we'll have you in person, too.
Well, I didn't met Christine already and Nicholas. You know, they made me feel very welcome, you know. I'm glad to be aboard.
Excellent. Great to have you.
Glad to have you. Thank you.
I know we're gonna, yes, thank you. And I know we're gonna, days, you know, are gonna be oh geez, I said it's gonna be getting busy soon because like, well, we're days right around the corner. You know, so I'm coming right at the right time.
Thank you, Mark. All right, number two, Keegan Van Sickleen requests a Class II motor vehicle sales license at 27 Brook Street. Is Keegan gonna join us?
And unmute. Hello.
Hello and welcome.
Thank you. Hello, board.
Welcome.
So this is a a request for a Class II motor vehicle, motor vehicle sales license at your existing repair shop on Brook Street. Is that right?
Yep.
All right. So what are you gonna be doing?
So it was been kind of driven by customer input. We often get requests to purchase specific vehicles for customers. I also have clients that are selling maybe a specific car and another customer looking for said specific car. And then also before the COVID hit, a lot of parents asking for, you know, do you have any Volkswagen Jetta, my, you know, my son, my daughter's getting their license. Like I stressed to the zoning board, there's no intentions of inflatable things out in front of the shop and, you know, big neon car sales. It's not happening. I'm very happy with the, how well we've been received in the neighborhood. The nice appearance the shops had, that's what we plan on, you know, continuing with with the the Class II license. We did specify with the zoning board that there would be three specific spots behind the building where we would keep sale cars. But that would not be very often. Again, it's, it's more to when a customer requests a specific vehicle, we can seek out that vehicle and then resell to to our clients.
Any questions, Pete?
No, no, I thought the application was pretty complete, so thank you.
Gus, I had two, and it doesn't have to do with the merits of the application, only the process. First question, Christine, did we actually have this form on board or is there someplace you got, like I looked at this form and said, boy, this looks pretty extensive. Did we actually have this? Or do you go, how'd you get it? Where, where was it?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna give up Nick's secrets, but I'll let him tell you.
Okay.
Beg, borrow, and steal from other communities.
Okay, that was first question. And then my other, my other question, this is a Class II license. I'm guessing a Class I license must be for someone, an actual used car, lot sales, maybe?
New cars.
Okay, and what's class three?
Junkyard.
Ah, okay. Good, well, then we got the right one checked off there. I have no further questions.
All right. All right.
So I, we're ready? Yes.
I say there's no, no, there's no questions from the public on this, and so unless there are any public questions, just give the people a minute in case there's any of those. I think with these licenses, they're technically we technically usually take some public comment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Sorrell.
Assuming that the ZBA decision has a limitation on the number of vehicles to be on the premises at any one time, you should track that in the motion.
So I'm not seeing any comments, Gus, so if you want to have a a motion that includes Mr. Sorrell's proviso.
Subject, so subject to the zoning, subject to ZBA limit.
No more than three, no more than three vehicles to be on the premises at any one time. Is that correct?
Yep, it was, it was a five-car dealer license, three-car on the premises, and we have the spots been designated with the ZBA.
Okay. I move that we approve Keegan's automotive application for a Class II motor vehicle, the motor vehicle sales license at 27 Brook Street, subject to the ZBA limit of not more than three of the five cars that are licensed on site at any given time.
Second.
Mr. Markucci.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Murby, yes.
Well, thank you very much and good luck with the new venture.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Hope it goes well. Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
I will say this, this next item is a happy one to see on our agenda, and so we are welcoming Roberta Lynch, Director of the Council on Aging, to discuss reopening the center to the public. Welcome, Roberta.
Nobody ever thinks we moved this quickly on our agenda. Hi, Roberta.
Hi. Hey, there we are.
Welcome, Roberta.
Hi, thank you. Nice to be here. I love these Zoom selectmen meetings. I've attended more meetings this year than I have in the last 20 years. It's wonderful. So I just want to give you some updates on the center, talk to you about three areas, actually, not just the opening. The first is a slow, safe, safe opening of the center. The other is reestablishing our respite care program, and the third is the tax work-off program. Just so you know, today marks 12 months and 10 days that we've actually been closed. And during that time, two of our programs really went south, and that's the respite program and our Saturday program. The three Saturday staff were let go July 1st, right around July 1st. But since that time, the, the six of us have been, we've provided over 4,300 events in the last 12 months, 10 days. We've provided 4,700 services to people, which would include, you know, maybe delivering food, delivering a mask, making wellness calls, anything that, that anybody calls for that needs our support for, that's a service call. And we've had a participation of 1,200 people in the last year, 10 days. And the monthly newsletter, as you've probably received in the mail, has been going out monthly. And most recently, since January, we've worked with over 1,000 residents with COVID information, vaccine appointment assistance, anything that they have concerns about related to COVID. So we've been really quite busy. Our phone bill has gone up quite a bit. But that's okay. It's all good work. So the reopening of the center. So this is, I remember Christine saying during the course of the year, every day something changes. So it may be that my plans for reopening might change a little bit because I'm getting a little pushback from some of our younger folks who are participating in our exercise programs. I would say that the late 70s and up individuals, they want that center to open up. That's their home away from home. The younger seniors are more interested in, in probably stay having the programs at home, like our exercise on Zoom that we've been doing. So in the newsletter, it said that beginning April 12th, we would start, we are gonna start our outside programs like we did in the summer and fall. Our quilting group wants to come together, our knitters want to come together. If it's a nice day, we'll do exercise outside. We did, we're gonna start outside movies. We have the bocce, the ping pong, the horseshoes. So we're gonna do a lot of outside activities starting April 12th, as, as much as we can. Thursday, we had our Red Sox opening day parking lot party, but I think it's gonna be a washout. It's supposed to rain quite a bit on Thursday. One of the things we had, St. Patrick's Day, we had a grab and go corned beef and cabbage dinner. We served 80 dinners to Medfield residents. That was very successful. In May, my plan is to begin having having small groups come into the center, but have a reopening celebration on May 5th between 10:00 and 11:30 in the morning for coffee and pastries that will, will serve. So I'm just, so I'm a little hesitant to have large groups come back in the building right now. There's a lot of, you know, the, the, some cases are going up. So it's gonna be slow, it's gonna be safe. I want the doors to be open in the fall. We didn't have anyone coming in to even use the restroom, so now people will be able to come in and use the restrooms and have small meetings, small groups. We had, last Thursday, we had seven people come in to fold the newsletter, and I put three in the large exercise hall and, and then three in the dining hall. And I had them so far apart that they were like laughing because they're like, Roberta, we need a microphone to have a conversation. I mean, they were like spread everywhere. But I, it's gonna be a slow opening. That's what I'm comfortable with. So as long as I get the support of this, of you, the selectmen and the Board of Health, I want to move forward, but very safely, cautiously, you know, masks, hand sanitizer, the whole bit, like we did in the fall outside. So that's the opening. It will, it'll grow slowly. Comments?
Pete, any comments or questions?
I think it, it makes sense to, to open small and enlarge it as you can, Roberta. I guess that's all I would suggest. So it sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, I, I just don't want anybody getting, I don't want anybody getting sick there. So I just want to be very cautious. All right, so that is.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, I have a couple, just a couple. First, you also mentioned respite care and tax write-off. Are you gonna
Yeah, I'm next.
Okay, so on this, on the slow reopening, the only, first off, I, I just want to express my appreciation for what you all, what the COA has done throughout this year. I think, I think the town across the board has managed to deal with this crisis without without yanking the tiller too hard left or right and trying to keep the boat on course as much as we could. And I look at what you've done despite the circumstances within the COA to, to reach out, to keep the seniors connected, more recently now to give the seniors assistance at getting vaccinations and appointments and things like that. And I just comment that at a time like this, when it would be easy for a lot of people to panic or throw the towel in or go hide under the bed, I don't think that's what you all did, and I personally appreciate that.
Thank you.
On the opening, the only question I have and I, I'm sensitive to the fact that we have aid money coming in. So my question is, is there anything about what you're contemplating doing? I'm thinking primarily outside in support of this slow opening that would, that would give us pause to consider any kind of expenditures that would make it easy for you to do it or easy for you to do it better. You know, I'm picturing, I'm picturing those flaming heating lamps that restaurants have out on sidewalks or something like that. So, you know, it's that kind of stuff, or whether it's, whether it's, you know, PPE or COVID protection stuff, anything that we should be looking at as a town to help you out on that front.
Right. So I will look at that right now. Off the top of my head, I can't think we did. So you know, we had that fiasco with the tent last year. We had that wonderful donation, and then two weeks later it got destroyed. And I did, through the CARES Act, I did get a replacement tent. So that, I've talked to Maurice and it's planned to go up between April 5th and the 7th, which would be great for when we start opening outside. I am going to, going to put the tent on the back patio and Gary came over to the center and looked at where I wanted to place it, and he said, that's fine. I had ordered another 720 pounds of weight so that it'll, it'll be 1,400 pounds of weight to keep that tent hopefully in place. I just purchased an iPad and a tripod thinking of when we do X number of people might, a few people might come into the center for exercise, and then the tripod and the iPad, we can zoom for those people who want to stay home. So that I just, that just came and I set up the iPad today. So right now I don't have any
Okay.
thoughts, but thank you. I would think about that.
Okay.
I like the heating ideas. I did look at those last year.
Yeah.
But I don't know about the propane and the flames. I don't know how that works with our property. No?
We'll talk, Roberta, we'll talk.
The seniors want a fire pit.
Oh, God. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so the respite program. So I think it's really important to begin again this slowly. Kathy and Trish have been maintaining contact with families of club members over the last year. They do a weekly Zoom with members on Wednesdays, and we know how the isolation has affected people who have a normal cognitive functioning, but those who have impairment, it's really been pretty devastating for them. So we want to probably that might be one of the first things in one of the classrooms we do is start opening up our club so that we can give some caregiver relief to those taking care of a loved one who's struggling. So the same precautions, we've looked at the room and we would have no more than five potential participants plus staff and possibly a volunteer. So that would be eight or nine people in our largest classroom down the hall.
And Roberta and I met this week, actually, it might have been last week at this point. Roberta has written up all of her protocols and procedures for both the reopening of the General Senior Center and the respite program, and they're currently being reviewed by the Board of Health agent to make sure we don't need to tweak anything, but it was very thorough job done by Roberta.
So that, and what we're doing with the respite, we're gonna change the times and shorten the day, 11:30 to 3. We've, you know, over time, that nine o'clock arrival for some families to get their loved one ready and out the door was a little challenging. So right now we're thinking of 11 to 11:30 to 3. So we're looking forward to opening, opening up that program. So the next.
Before they, see if, before we move on, Pete, any questions?
Oh, any questions?
No questions from Pete. Gus, any questions?
No, no.
None for me either, so.
I do have a question for Mr. Sorrell. Is it, can we require proof of vaccination for participation at the center or in the respite program?
Is a short answer or a more complicated answer? The short answer is yes. The problem becomes obtaining that information without violating HIPAA or or ADA or other types of things like that. So I would suggest frankly, you reach out to some of your colleagues and see if they've adopted a program and if they've taken those things into consideration.
Okay, will do. Okay. Okay. So the tax work-off program. I met with Georgia and Yvonne last week, and this is what I'd like to propose for the tax work-off program for the remainder of this year. As you know, it was suspended several months ago because of COVID, and I propose that the tax work-off program to run from May through the end of October for five months for half the amount, $500 and half the hours. So during, you know, May or beginning of June to the end of October, they have to work 37 hours for a $500 reduction in their real estate taxes. We would run this, run it the same way, would put out the application. People have to fill out the application. If we have more than 65 participants, we'll do the lottery like we've done for years, place the folks in positions in town, the various town departments. If town, department heads are interested in the assistance, I know we love the assistance at the Council on Aging. And then just come October, when this half year is over, we'll start the cycle again for the next tax work-off season.
Can I just, I'm sorry, Roberta.
Yep.
Thought we had discussed half, doing half of the 65 that we normally do.
Oh. Um. I thought it was half the money.
Half the money and half the number of people, given that we still have some restrictions, we may not be able to fill 65 spots. The problem is if you have the lottery and give 65 spots and we can't fill the jobs on that, there's some ongoing municipal finance issues with that we would need to discuss.
Okay, I, I, I hear you. I didn't, I don't remember that half the people. I, I just was half the money. So. So I, I think it's important to, to start that up again and get people out and feeling productive and giving them a little relief on their taxes for this year.
Any questions, Pete?
I think it's a good idea to get the program running again.
I think it's a good idea to get the program running again. I guess I'm wondering about the fact that you're it sounds like you're you're spanning two fiscal years. Does that create a problem for you?
No, 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 because our, the normal tax work off would have ended this October. You know, if we had started normally without COVID, they would be working right along until October and then they get their reduction in February.
Okay.
So this is just that, this half of the year.
Yep, all right.
Gus, any questions?
Yeah, the one, the one question I had, maybe this is for Christine as much as Roberta. The the time period is May to October. Are we confident that we're going to be open and we will be open in May to be able to start doing that that soon, given as much as is still up in the air?
I I think so. We, you know, honestly, we do have, because the phone started ringing, I mean, off the hook in January with the vaccines. We brought volunteers who are willing to come back and sit at the desk, you know, with the mask on. So they come in for three hours from 9 to 12 because that's the busiest time when the phone phone just rings, rings, rings. So they've been coming in already, not that that counts as tax work off, but we do have, here at our building, we do have that need.
Okay, so in the other town departments, though, Christine?
I mean, selfishly, I would really like my senior back.
Where I was going with that was I was just recognizing a possibility that things don't go perfectly over the next month and suddenly we've got a complication in May. And I was either thinking, on one hand, we might say, well, yeah, maybe that happens. And if it does, then it it's a one month windfall for people who signed up and I'm okay with that. Or it could be that, you know, then I was wondering, should we extend the potential period? Not the, not the number of months, but the potential period to be able to go into October, November. If if we couldn't start till June, would we do five months from there or something like that? I'm just trying to think through event possibilities, that's all.
So I know a couple of other towns, what they have done is they pay for, say, the number of hours that people work, they pay them, they give them the minimum wage, the 1350. So if they only complete 20 hours, I can't do that math in my head, but you know, 1350 times 20. So and that could be, and Mark Sorrell had a conversation with Yvonne and said that, you know, that they would have to sign, you know, a kind of an agreement, and that could be part of the agreement. I mean, we, you already gave last year for people who didn't complete ours, the $1,000, and that was very generous and and that was and deserving because they have no, there was no fault of theirs. But if they want to do this program this year, then I think the agreement is you complete your 37 hours, you get your $500. You complete 20 hours, you get X amount.
Okay.
For me, if it works for everybody.
As long as it's a maximum of 500, we make that.
Correct. Yes, yes, yes. And then when we start again, you know, if we are open enough that we can do the full tax work off program, that will be the six, the 65 slots at 1,000.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. That's my question.
Nothing further from me?
Okay.
Anything else, Roberta, or is that it?
No, no, that's, that's, that's all on my pit. Yeah, I'm done.
I think this was, as expected, a relatively happy visit. This is good news to hear and I I really hope that we are firing on all cylinders when we come to May and and you can kind of gradually increase the number of people you're able to to serve and be back at full strength pretty soon, so.
So just mark May 5th, weather permitting, we're going to have a little celebration. I have a piano player coming. We're going to bring our piano outside and and it should be fun.
Wonderful. May 5th, reopening of the center.
10 to 11:30, so for coffee.
That's great news. Do you need it? Do we need any votes for any of this or is this just an update?
I think if you vote the respite care program as presented by Roberta.
Okay. Yeah, so if we need more details, I'll revise this, but I move that we approve the reopening of the respite care program as proposed by Roberta. Second. Mr. Markucci.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby, aye.
And then actually, just about the tax care, the tax work off program as well.
I move that we approve the proposed tax work off program for May through October as described by Roberta. Second. Mr. Markucci.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yep.
Mr. Murby, yes.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Roberta. This is great.
Great, thank you very much.
And I hope you don't stop coming to our meetings when we start meeting in person again.
I live in Franklin.
The entertainment value alone makes it worth the time.
Pretty funny, actually. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roberta.
Bye bye.
Right, next up, the Board of Health to discuss the public health nurse position and to provide a COVID-19 update.
Talk quickly.
Stephen Rush with his own QR code. Excellent.
This board of health does not mess around.
Steve.
Bear with me one sec.
Take all the time he needs, Stephen.
Is that for your vaccine passport, Steve?
A QR code. Very impressive. Kathy.
Hi, Holly. Hi, all.
Hi, Carol.
It links to a bibliography of riveting scientific articles that.
We probably should have a QR code to link to all the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
There you go.
I'm Melissa.
Hi, guys.
Nice to see you.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Health. Thank you for adding one more meeting to your relatively robust schedule of meetings.
Nice to be here. We appreciate it.
It seems like we're starting to get a breather now, though. Hopefully that continues. So can I share my screen?
Please do.
So yeah, thanks for this opportunity to talk a little bit about this public health nursing position. I think you're somewhat familiar already with the the idea. And we've been making the rounds to the warrant committee and the personnel board to discuss it and 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 we'd like to give you a short overview of really the the rationale for what we think the public health nursing could do for Medfield and 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 why we support it. I'm just gonna start by giving you all my, all the conclusions or like the takeaways in one slide in case in case we're in a hurry. So first, I wanted to convey on behalf of the whole board that I think we all strongly support the creation of this one full-time equivalent public health nursing position. And the things that we think it would be, the problems it would solve or the things that it would be able to accomplish are increasing the direct services for vulnerable populations to meet minimum standards. Because right now, the level of public health services that we actually deliver in Medfield is is very, very, very low relative to standards of Public Health Association, of state standards and recommendations and so forth. We think that this, having this position would help enhance coordination with the Council on Aging, the police and emergency services, schools, in terms of communication perhaps with Medfield TV, and also private organizations and groups in town that have an interest in public health. Third, having this position would kind of create a core infrastructure or the sort of tree roots, if you will, that would enable us to or anchor, I don't know what the right metaphor is, to pursue grants, regional partnerships, access volunteers and interns from the public health schools around the Boston area. And right, you know, where right now we don't really have the capacity to pursue a lot of funding opportunities, a lot of partnerships and so forth, because A, we don't have a lot to offer and we don't have a manpower or woman power to actually do the grunt work of putting those. And I think we might also want to have a public health nurse, just from the safety perspective of having a drag racing track in our town. I wasn't aware of it, but now that I know we have one, I appreciate. It's another reason, six. Seriously, so so that infrastructure to enable us to pursue these other opportunities, basically to leverage that position to deepen our links with other towns and pursue other funding opportunities for public health services. Fourth is to better prepare us for emergencies like the one we just experienced, the COVID pandemic as one major one. And you can imagine smaller ones like Triple E and so forth, but you know, having, having a staff person would would put us in a better position as a, as a health department, as a board of health, as a town. And, you know, we, I think we got through this pandemic well, but we depended a lot on frankly Kathy Thompson and the school nurses heavily. And and their goodwill and 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 volunteerism in a sense. And but this would, this would sort of strengthen us a lot. And 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 connected to that really is something that was revealed in the COVID pandemic, in our current situation where we have contracted services, a small amount of contracted services. We found that we really don't have local control over data, information and decision-making around the pandemic and some of the public health choices we had to make in these emergency situations. And I think if you, if we, if we did have a public health nurse in-house that owned our data related to surveillance data and so forth, contact tracing and so forth, that would greatly help us in terms of being able to be flexible and responsive to the pandemic in a way that is sensitive to our citizens, but also effective at controlling disease. And and reassuring in terms of where and the risks are and aren't. Some other additional considerations to note that, you know, we will present today that in most other similar towns, they have actually a public health director position as well as a public health nurse to deliver services and sometimes more than one FTE of public health nurse. So we're not, you know, envisioning expanding that much. But you might ask the question, well, do we need a public health director or do we need a public health nurse? And I think we're sort of starting out small and saying, you know, we envision primarily a public health nurse. I think we do hope to find someone who's a bit entrepreneurial and willing to take on some of those kind of public health director type tasks because we don't have a public health director. But we, but nevertheless, we expect this person would represent a significant increase in service levels and address our current gaps in service. And finally, you know, in some of our other meetings, we have some conversations about whether it would be adequate to have a part-time position in terms of being, you know, fiscally prudent, or do we really need a full-time position in Medfield? And, you know, in addition to pointing out, you know, the the level of services that that go on in other towns, just to have a benchmark reference point, there are other reasons why we would prefer or argue for a full-time position. It's going to be quite a competitive market right now for public health nursing because of the pandemic. And we are hoping that a fully funded, full-time position might be more attractive to the kind of candidates we'd like to attract. You know, this would be a high quality, kind of an entrepreneurial candidate who's willing to be in Medfield and invest in building relationships in the town, strengthening core public service, health services here. You know, over a whole, I hopefully a longer time scale than, you know, just a year or something. You know, we'd like to avoid someone who turnover and 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 our hope is that a full-time position may be more may give us a better chance of attracting the kind of person who will who will take on that role of building something where there currently isn't anything and working with us and other organizations in town to do that. I'm going to turn it over to Carol, who's gonna walk through the rest of the slides. Thank you. Carol, just let me know when to move forward.
Thank you, Stephen.
Sure. And, you know, I, I realized that, and forgive the noise, I'm outside as you can see. I'm trying to be thoughtful of the people I'm with. I realize that's when we when I was chair last year to the 1st of October, all our meetings organized by Christine, sometimes one or two a week, were on Zoom. And we, this is our first meeting, I believe, with you all as the Board of Selectmen. And I just felt it's important. Our other board members are here and maybe they just want to say hello and I know I'm off script, but they're so valuable to us and Steve and I certainly work in unison with them. So Melissa Coughlin and Holly Rand, hello, yeah. Melissa's there and Holly is a physician's assistant at the Brigham and Kathy Thompson, of course, you all know, and Melissa Coughlin, who is born and raised in Medfield and a bedside nurse at the Brigham. So I just feel it's really important, A, for us to thank you, but B, to remind you that that we are a deep bench and I'm grateful for that. So thank you for enabling, allowing us to be here. I want to extend from our board our sincere thanks to Christine and all the work she's done during this year. She literally has been our public health director in Medfield. Many of you may have heard me say that before, but if you haven't, I don't know of all the work I do across the state of any other town manager who's taken the reins because of capacity and worked so diligently and been advocating for public health. So I'm grateful for that. And we also appreciated the opportunity that we had to go to the Personnel Board and present this position. And we appreciated their unanimous support of of the position for a full-time nurse. And now here we are tonight as scheduled. So thank you. And we will ask you what your process is and ask you for questions. I also do want to recognize that Rep. Garlic is is here tonight and she's done incredible work at the state level in public health. And we'd like to have her just give a brief overview on that because it's important for you all to know the state's recognition of public health capacity and what she's doing to build that. So what is public health? You know, we look, it's a system, work that protects, promotes the health of people and communities where they live, learn, work and play. You know, through Mass General Law 111, we have obligations and reducing the burden of disease is absolutely one of our statutory requirements. What's a public health system is, you know, all private, public and voluntary entities that contribute to delivering essential public health services within a jurisdiction, in our case, our town. So there's myriad responsibilities, but we listed these because these are by Mass General Law 111 through the regulations through the state, CMR. And these are the sub, these are the headings and scope of what a local board of health is responsible for and monitors and actually oversees through a town. And as you can see, the scope is broad, anything from Hinckley Pond to day camps, smoking, housing inspections. And as you know, the town has a consultant who does all the environmental and inspectional services, you know, co-managed by Nancy Benati. So we want to be respectful of your time. I tend to talk a lot, but one of the important things is the almost 200 communicable and infectious diseases that we are mandated to monitor for the community. And that's where we found ourselves, of course. Have, our Board of Health has, through our VNA nurse, responded to a TB case and different diseases. But this year, here we are with COVID. Next slide. So what does Medfield Health Department, what is our structure? Out of deference to you and respect, you understand. you and respect, you understand what, what the department is, is staffed at this presentation is to educate everyone. We have not, we do not have a public health director. The Health Department budget has one staff person, administrative coordinator, works 28 hours a week. This budget is shared with the board and one of the board's responsibilities is to look at and understand a town's public health budget. This is the salary request for FY22, $41,598 for an administrative coordinator. All of the other services in Medfield Public Health are contracted. So annual contracts, inspectional and environmental consultant for FY22, the request of $56,400. And then the public health nurse for FY21 was $9,659. And traditionally, since I've joined the board, I won't speak to before that, it's been three years, the public health nurse contract was through the VNA, Natick Walpole, and that service provision was approximately eight hours a month. In FY22, of course, there's no budget request because the request is in there for the FTE. The other services are SNARC, which is an incredible disability and support program for vulnerable residents that they can partake on, in, across the region, as well as we, and this was a clarification point for us. We are mandated to have an emergency dispensing site plan with the state, and that was when we started an emergency preparedness contract. I don't know, I can't really speak to the current status of that. Obviously miscellaneous operational expenses. So thank you for listening through that. And our next slide, I believe, tells you what other towns have. So Westwood has a full-time public health nurse and a full-time health director. Coincidentally, Jared Orsini, who's the Westwood Health Director, moved to Medfield last fall, which I didn't know I worked with Jared through my work for my professional job. So he's a Medfield resident, but Westwood Health Director, in case you have seen him. Dedham has a full-time nurse and a part-time nurse and a public health director. Walpole, one full-time nurse and a health director. Norwood has two full-time nurses, the second one fully approved outside of the CARES Act in their FY22, operating for next year and onsite now and a health director. Needham has one full-time nurse, one part-time nurse, and then Needham has two assistant public health directors. But one of those assistants is, public health directors is an RN and an MPH who used to be the nurse. So, so they have a lot of nursing capacity, which we appreciate because they've been helpful to us. Milton, one full-time and a public health director. Milis, two part-time and a public health director. Wayland, one full-time and a public health director. And Wellesley, you can see that there. So Dover, Sherburne and Midway use contracted nursing services. I don't know if they have public health directors. I didn't add them to this slide. I created the original slide. So I can't speak to that. Steve may. Next slide. So, um, we actually want to have our conversation with you, but as Steve talked about initially, and Melissa and Holly and Kathy may speak to also, having a new nurse who does not have a health director, have this position being full-time due to the broad scope of it, hopefully will attract a candidate who understands they want to be, they will be fully committed to the scope and depth of the role as we are. And obviously with the broad scope, sometimes people that work part-time in nursing supplement their current income. And we want our full-time, our nurse to understand that the town is committed and to, for her or him to engage in the multifaceted responsibilities of nursing. And also I'll tell you that, and we will talk about this, and Denise May, if we could ask her a question about the safe too, is that the, the, the value of shared services and mentoring and Segal Reese and Norwood and Tim McDonald and Needham, people are willing to mentor and partner. And we hope that the full-time position will enable the nurse to feel comfortable and when they offer services and learning and mentoring to take advantage of that. They're not alone, even though there's no health director. So, you know, we understand, and all of you do as well, the difference between clinical nursing, where it's an individual situation that can be tracked with health outcomes. And then the, the, the scope of a public health nurse works on the, you know, the environmental level, the ecological model. So taking those clinical skills and transferring that knowledge and expertise in nursing to be able to look at the community as a whole and do prevention activities. Some nurses that in the towns I work with, they do blood pressure clinics for town staff, DPW, water and sewer, but also of course for residents across the lifespan, you know, young to old. And I always point to myself and my children laugh, but, you know, across the lifespan and also as Steve said, partnering. Sorry for that. Partnering with the COA police, many communities, and I believe, I know Chief Mimi had, but I don't know about, Chief Garrett does amazing work. If she has the monthly Community Crisis Intervention Team. But, you know, diverse stakeholders in a town get together and, and with respect and talk about mental health, substance use, needs that residents have where, you know, social work, public health nursing can support. So all age residents, and again, we understand that research shows 80% of someone's overall health is driven by those social determinants of health. And those are benefits that where people live and work and play and pray. So, next slide. One of the interesting and powerful things we've learned is that the Mass Department of Public Health has wonderful interns every year. And we are not able to have that, that opportunity to have someone mentor and bring in an intern through those programs because the capacity is limited. The work and scope that Bridget, the environmental consultant does is broad. And additionally, there's the Academic Public Health Volunteer Corps who uses public health grad students and current grad students. And they've really expanded that program. And we know that a public health nurse could be that anchor to, to bring someone in and/or two people. There's many hours they've committed and the state has committed to expanding the program, as Steve had said, to, through medical schools, to be able to do informatics and, and all sorts of services for local public health to build capacity. And one of the other issues that has been a lost opportunity. I'm going to go inside in a second. We today have an opportunity to work with $9 million in the governor's budget to, many towns are working a minimum of three to get $300,000 annually for shared services, not giving up their authority as local boards of health if in fact down the road they want to. But, and many towns are working together, but we don't have the opportunity to, to be able to submit that grant if we don't have someone to offer some services. I don't think at this point Christine has moved forward with that and with all the other work she's doing. Next slide. So these are, these are roles that a public health nurse would do. And we've talked about this and out of respect to you, I'm sure you understand, but one of the challenges that we saw this year with COVID, and I'm hoping Melissa and Holly would like to speak to this slide also, is that there were opportunities for our homebound residents to work with local public health departments and Needham and had volunteered to do that. And there is no nurse here to coordinate that and put that together. So that was an opportunity that now our homebound residents will go to the state through the state program as opposed to having the opportunity to be local. And low-income housing, low-income affordable senior housing as well with Tilden, one of the housing authority people told me they were going in a van over to Milis. And these are opportunities that other Needham had, had offered, but not having someone that has the time and capacity to coordinate that with Needham to come in and do that has, has been hard for us. I know that Melissa and Holly are medical experts. So I, I'd like to give them the opportunity to, to speak to this slide and the other work that a public health nurse could do from a medical standpoint. I think Melissa, Melissa, you know this pretty well, this.
Hey, guys. Thanks, Carol, for the opportunity. You have done a very robust slideshow for everyone. So I think up until this point, thank you for all the research you've done. To speak just on a personal note, and I don't know if I had brought this example up last time we met, but I have a friend whose mom was homebound and it was really frustrating for me as a Board of Health member not to be able to provide the opportunity for her to be vaccinated because we just didn't have the wherewithal for it. So, you know, from just that small example to like the broader range of services that a nurse could provide is just, is hard to put a price tag on, but I think is almost priceless. But you know, we, we start to think as our minds are preparing for what we hope is the end of this pandemic, but from a medical and a mental health perspective, I think we're just sort of unwrapping the layers of this onion that are going to be sort of the PTSD from all that we've been through on the mental health perspective. So I think we have unfortunately a long road ahead of us that a nurse in town could help alleviate some of that burden of public health needs.
And I, I think it's important to, to talk about, and I know Steve mentioned this, equally the work that Kathy Thompson has done because our, and Melissa, you, you could probably speak to this better than me as someone who works as a substitute nurse with taking up the, the slack of the limitations of the VNA with COVID tracking and.
Yeah, I mentioned this in the Personnel Meeting yesterday or two days ago or whenever, I've lost track of time, but we talked about how Kathy has really done the job. Feel as though her goodwill has been, I don't know, taken advantage of is not the right word, but she's gone above and beyond her job description. And I think that that's the reason we were able to stay afloat this past year.
So Steve, do you want to go over these slides?
Yeah, maybe I'll just close on this slide. You know, it's always nice to be able to look at these issues from an economic perspective also. I mean, I'm a, I, I do benefit cost analysis all day in my job. So it's, you know, I was thinking about it through that lens as well. And, you know, there, there's no question that public health, investing in public health services is, is a good buy in terms of the returns you get, both in terms of reduced morbidity and mortality, but also in terms of, you know, health savings in other sectors, whether that's in the criminal justice sector or in other social services and so forth. Now that being said, I want to be honest about it. It's not, I'm not saying that it necessarily pays for itself on the budget of the town. I don't know if there's that many cost offsets in that regard. But in terms of whether it pays for itself in term, in terms of health outcomes, and to some extent, some cost offsets more broadly for town residents, there likely is a, a quite strong return on investment to these kinds of services. So I think I'll stop there and, and we can take any questions that you might have.
All right, starting with Pete. Pete, do you have any questions?
I, I guess the, the only, I think it makes a lot of sense to do this. And the only question in my mind really is, is the financial one. It's always hard to add another position to the, to the town budget because our taxes are so high already in town. So I don't know, I don't know how to answer that one, I guess. I mean, I think that the, we've learned in the past year that public health is way more important than we realized from our past spending histories in this country. So I don't, I guess I don't have a specific question for you guys, but I thank you very much for the presentation and for all the work that you've done. And Kathy Thompson for going way above and beyond apparently in the past year.
Yes.
Thanks, Pete. Gus, any questions?
Sure. I'll make up for Pete's absence of questions here. My questions actually don't have to do with the question of should we add a public health nurse. I'm, I'm accepting the advice of the Board of Health that that's a wise thing for us to do. So the, the technical justification you're making for it, I'm accepting that. You guys have done a stellar job this year in helping us get through the COVID situation. I don't, I don't question your technical assessment, I guess is what I'm saying. What I found myself wondering about though, as I was listening to that presentation was, was a broader question around what this actually means for this town in terms of how we're thinking about public health. If we're going to add a nurse, how does, how does the addition of a person fit into how we're looking at public health in the town across the board? And so some of these are specific questions and some are more philosophical, I guess. The first one is, there was one slide you had that showed the various things that we're currently contracting for. The one thing, I just want to make sure that what you're recommending here, I understand. Of all of those things that we're currently contracting for, I think all you're proposing is that we not contract for a part-time nurse and move that one contracted piece in-house. Is that correct?
Yes. That's correct. And, and, and it, there is no question that wrapped up in that is that it is a substantial expansion in terms of total effort being applied to those services.
Right. Yep. Okay, that get, that actually feeds into some of my subsequent questions. What, one of the reactions I had to the slide that showed the role of the public health nurse is that the items that were there appear to be focused on physical health. And I didn't really see clear connections to mental health. And so that led me to go down the path of saying, and it is partly addressed here in one of the slides when it talks about connecting to Medfield Outreach, EMS, you know, seniors. But the, the question I have, and this one is, I suppose philosophical, is I'm, I'm looking for the vision for townwide health services and how the public health nurse fits into that. So in other words, we have Medfield Outreach, which is moving in a direction around, I'll, I guess I'll, I'll call it social, you know, mental health and, and some of the social work needs of the, of the town. You have the COA that is addressing some of the, the probably mostly physical health needs of seniors. You have the Housing Authority. I know when we were talking about the project to the right of Tilden Village, Candace was talking about some of the health programs that the Housing Authority brings in to, to Tilden Village or would bring them in if the, that project went through. He brought up He brought up like EMS, you got police, and I see a lot of pieces of, of activities in town. Being carried out by different agencies in town, and I'm trying to figure out whether the public health nurse. Is just one more stick in the Jenga pile or whether the public health nurse has an overarching. Not necessarily control, but an overarching responsibility for making sure we have a coherent program. That addresses both physical and mental health, so this gets at what the role. We envision a public health nurse would be, including the role relative to all the other things we do here in town.
Absolutely, I mean, I think it's the latter for sure, Gus, that the, the, we have numerous. Fragmented pieces of health, public health service going on, whether it's in the schools or the Council on Aging or the housing. The police and EMS and so forth, and even you could count the pharmacies, the commercial pharmacies if you want in that. The, and, and a number of, a number of, you know, not-for-profit, you know, social, civic organizations as well. And really, the idea here is that this public health nurse. Is exa- is exactly what I believe we need in order to have a coherent public health strategy townwide. To link those things together in a rational way and, and coordinate them and. And realize that they're available and realize, identify where there are gaps. And work to fill those gaps and part of, part of filling those gaps may be. You know, applying for grants or participating in new programs, but right now, we, you know, with. With this, with the contracted VNA services at eight hours a month or whatever it is now, or, you know, we have. Zero capacity to do any of that, we really need a, a, a body. You know, we really need a person in-house who's dedicated to doing that, yeah.
Okay, okay, that, that's, that's reassuring, I, I, you know, what's behind my comments, the picture I would have of that is not that it's a. Hierarchical linear kind of a thing, but more that it's a network. And you need somebody in the network to be a catalyst, I'm not sure if this is quite valid, Kathy, but I have a feeling that perhaps. To some extent, the comments that people have made about the role you played. At least for a portion of that network, because I know you're tied in with outreach and I know you're tied in with the schools. In essence, at least part of that network feels to me like you've probably been a key linchpin. In making those, you know, network connections. That it would be if we did more of that, that would probably make a lot of sense.
Yes, you know, this will be your opportunity, Gus, to have a community health assessment done. By a public health nurse and to coordinate all those pieces. You do have little pieces of all of this throughout town, you're right, but to have one cohesive person to, which is more a director as opposed to just a nurse, but. This person would, would need to do both of those things in the new role. But yes, we absolutely, we've had, you know, personally dozens of experiences over the past year where if we had had a public health nurse, you know. Just had something on Sunday in town that, you know, just go knock on a business's door and could have, you know, avoided a lot of kids coming to school that shouldn't have been at school and. You know, just things that, you know, having somebody who knows our community and, you know, can make those connections and the relationship piece, you know, so important. To bring everyone together, you know, I'm fully. You know, behind this, I think it's, I think Medfield deserves this.
Okay, and I'll, I'll push that one step further, and Steve, you were kind of the straight man for me, there was a slide. That Carol put up about how a public health nurse touches the six factors that contribute to public health. And I, for some time, have felt like. We probably, as a community, not as a town government, but as a community, we have probably not. Had the bonds and the connections outside of the town agencies that we perhaps could have, we've had some of them. I'm not sure if they're as strong as they could be around, I looked at these six things and I said, well. Is the public health nurse actually going to kind of wrap their arms around all six of these? Or the public health nurse only focused on some of these? How does, how does this point made on this slide? Relate to what we're talking about for a public health nurse?
I can answer that in some, some way, and Melissa and Holly and Kathy can then join in. Clinical nursing is, is, and doing a blood pressure clinic and. If a public health nurse does that, or the care of clinical care, someone obtains at their primary care. That's, that, that is not, is only, research shows about 20%, you know, the work that you do individually with a person, so I'm trying to be. Thoughtful about this, so. We said the tree, we had the tree, it's like where people live, where people work. Interacting with and understanding the factors that are in, in impacting health in Medfield. And then is it, you know, food, nutrition, do people need childcare, maternal and child health? So the schools working with Kathy Thompson, so those six factors. If you look at them as people and then environments and how those environments actually impact someone's readiness to learn in their health. Across the ages, so I can ask if Kathy and Melissa and Holly want to expand on that, Gus.
I mean, I have one, just one thing to say about a lot of this, I, I just don't think that this, you know, we had talked at one point at a board of health meeting. About putting together a list of people in town, medical people that we could recruit in an emergency. You know, and then literally within months, the emergency happened and we hadn't had a chance to do this, and I just don't think. You know, this pandemic, th- this is just the beginning, I mean, I think, you know, we've seen triple E. We've seen SARS, we've seen HIV, I mean, we've seen AIDS, you know, all of these things in a very short period of time. And they were warning about this pandemic, you know, years ago, all these infectious disease experts. I just don't think the public health nurse decision should be based on the fact that we're looking at the end of this pandemic. I think we just need to be prepared as a community for whatever comes along, you know, including the mental health aspects of it, that's just my opinion about the public health nurse.
Yeah, I, my, my question had more to do with what the, again, it's this vision question that says. How do we see the public health nurse operating, you know? You, you, you can sit there and say, well, the full safety net includes the food cupboard, it probably includes the Medfield Foundation. I know that we had, that the outreach has connections through the churches, some, some of whom have people in their own right who are. Who are actually resources for helping some of these things, we have the referral network to Riverside, so there's this big network. That's kind of organically evolved and may or may not be the most well-thought-out network or the. Most robust or the, or the network that has the capacity that we would like for the full town, I was, I was just trying to, I'm not, I'm not just taking. Making a case, I'm just trying to say, so does this public health nurse kind of become the linchpin for that?
Yes, and the public health, as you know, with nursing, I think. The nurses can correct me, but out of all professions, they're like maybe the top two or three or maybe the first most trusted. In, when people survey, so nurses are trusted and, and the, we see this public health nurse and we have seen. Real benefits of staff trusting them, talking about mental health, family issues, health issues. Across all of those six places, being that, being that liaison, having the ability because she works on. You know, the community level to pull people together, also being a very trusted. Traditionally confidential advocate, but we absolutely do see this working collaboratively. Amongst those stakeholder groups. And I agree with, with Kathy Thompson, Medfield deserves, deserves this, we're not, we're not coming back next year to ask for a health director. We believe because of the conviction we have to people's mental health and physical health. That this would be the role, that would be that, that, that anchor to get us at the table with shared services, to get us additional funding. And to also be able to take advantage of internships and make those connections across our own town and outside of town. I, I think it might be valuable, if she will, if she's still on, for Denise to talk just a tiny bit about, about what they're doing at the state, just to kind of enlighten us all. And validate the work, understanding the capacity issues that we're all facing in tough municipal times. I don't know if she's still here.
She is, can we get through the questions from the board first and then, and then I'll, if, if the representative would like to speak, we have one person who'd like to speak as well. But why don't we get through the questions and the substance on this first, and then it, it, once we're there, if there's anything to be added that isn't covered.
I'm satisfied, I have my arms, I, I'm satisfied, I have my arms now wrapped around the concept, so I have no more questions.
Thank you, sorry.
And, and I don't either, I mean, I have followed this, but this request has been in the budget for a while, so I have followed. This request, and I think it, 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 it's one of these things that speaks for itself as, as a need, I, I don't think. This is obviously the ideal time to ask for it because we're all aware of, of what. The, the fact that we have probably needed this all along. And it just, nothing came up and no one mentioned it, and so you kind of carry on, and so I think to Pete's question about the budget. I think we obviously have room in the budget for it this year, the budget has been built with this included in it. I think we've all learned a lot about how the government works over the course of the last year, and I think there are likely opportunities for efficiencies within our existing governmental structure. That I think this likely can be accommodated going forward, and any kind of request for funds is always a matter of balancing sort of one. Against the other, but I do think similar to what. I said with Medfield Youth Outreach, my general philosophy on spending taxpayer money is that it ought to be spent on, spent on things that are public goods. And it's not just a cost benefit analysis, and if it's something that makes sense from a cost benefit analysis, a lot of times that's something that ought to be done by the private sector and not by the public sector. And the public sector really is for things that may not have a pure dollars and cents cost benefit, but has a public good to it, right? And, and, you know, so we won't get it beyond that, but that's kind of my, my general view on this, so I'm, I'm supportive of this. I, I know Jared Orsini would like to speak, and if Representative Garlic would like to speak, I'll give her an opportunity, I will ask both of them to keep it relatively brief. I, I don't think I'm hearing a lot of dissent from this request, and so. Gus or Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're inclined to talk us out of this, so. Okay, and so we'll start with Jared Orsini and then go Representative Garlic, and then if there's any last words from the Board of Health.
Jared, you can speak. Did we lose him?
I don't think he's on.
Hold on, let's try.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you, hi.
Hi, you're on.
Great, Jared Orsini, 21 Snyder Road. Nice to be with you all, as Carol may have mentioned, I am currently the Health Director for the Town of Westwood. I have about 15 years of experience in the field of public health, my current credential is a registered sanitarian. And I would say over 15 years, I've worn many hats in public health, and the hat of public health nurse is one hat that I cannot wear. I think it is the cornerstone of the public health practice. And that position is invaluable to every community, you know, for a lot of reasons which have obviously have already been touched on, a lot of my talking points have been crossed off, but I will say. Community health assessment and tracking of community health indicators to better allocate scarce public health resources. Is the one thing that I'd like to leave you with in my comments is something that a public health nurse is uniquely positioned to do. And as a public health professional, our resources are always in peril. And having someone who can look at data, move across different areas of the practice and allocate those resources that were allotted. Is one of the best ways to invest in the community health overall.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome to Medfield.
Thank you, happy to be here.
All right, and can you promote Representative Garlic, please? Welcome, Representative Garlic, the floor is yours.
Good, good evening, everyone, I'm so glad to see you all, Mike, I love that language that you would promote me, I like this. I will be very brief, I want to thank the.
I like that language, Representative.
I appreciate the extraordinary presentation by the Medfield Board of Health. And like Mike, I see a very warm reception on the part of the members of the Board of Selectmen. So I just wanted to add an extra dimension around synergy as Medfield moves into the future. As a registered nurse, as someone who served two terms on the Needham Board of Health and was the chair, and as your representative. I brought a, a strong passion for public health to the state legislature. In 2012, I served on the Joint Committee on Public Health, in 2014, I was the chief sponsor of legislation on a commission on local and regional public health. In 2016, that commission was, the bill was passed, the commission was seated, they brought recommendations. In 2018, we wrote legislation, we began to get initial pilot money. In 2020, we passed the first SAFE bill, and that is S A P H E, and it's the State Action Plan for Public Health Excellence. This is about local and regional public health, we passed that bill of April of 2020 last year. Just as we were starting the work on the pandemic. And that is where the $9 million for local public health has come from, with an additional $1 million at the state public health level. I am now the chief sponsor of the SAFE II bill, and that is to increase and to incentivize local and regional public health. To look for more resources, to increase the capacity in local and regional public health and to increase the expertise through training. I heard a little bit in the presentation, we talked about Needham, Dover and Medfield, I worked very hard to connect, that is the, my legislative district. To connect those resources together, I think Medfield moving forward with this kind of model. Makes them a, a good partner as we talk in the future about strengthening public health in the Commonwealth through legal, local and regional public health. None of which is mandated, all of which is voluntary, and people, the entities will decide on their own, we had to share services and how to share them. But what I know is that to work in partnership, you have to bring something to the table. When Medfield moves forward with, and I was very moved by Gus getting us on the record about what the vision of the public health nurse is. When we move forward with that kind of vision, we are going to be good partners with our neighboring towns. And we will be able to not only get benefits in what we're sharing, but we'll have something to offer. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Representative. Pete or Gus, any questions for Representative Garlic?
No, thank you for coming, Denise.
Always, Pete, always.
I have to always have a question, Denise, is there anything you heard tonight? That would lead you to say, and I suggest you look at something else besides, or does this look, sound to you like we're on the right track?
It absolutely sounds to me like you're on the right track, and Gus, when I was on the select board in Needham. One of the things I most wanted to do was really identify all the elements of our safety net and find real synergy in that. And I think this is going to give Medfield an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, speak, just to respond to that, I, I personally hope we can. Figure out how to do that in a way that by, that builds connections to the community, other community organizations, not just the, the town entities. I think a lot of that, in a lot of places, is eroding, and anything we can do to stop that erosion is a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise.
All right, Stephen or any other members of the Board of Health, any final comments?
No, just thank you for your time.
We really appreciate it, and, you know, we're just hoping and we're grateful that you're, you are. So positive and Christine's been such a huge advocate, and we just feel to, that Medfield will benefit from this position in so many ways.
Terrific, thank you.
Appreciate all your hard. Appreciate all your hard work over this past year.
So I would like, and Stephen, we've talked about this in other meetings we've been, so the process is you as the Board of Selectmen vote tonight or another night, or how does this work?
Well, I, I, I think, I think this is in the budget currently that, that the warrant committee has voted to support. As I understand it, the Personnel Board has supported the position. The annual warrant hearing on the budget is on Thursday. So I have every reason to think that this is going to remain in the budget that the Warrant Committee is preparing and presenting as the budget. I think it's fine. For us, we have not formally voted on the entirety of the budgets under our jurisdiction as yet. Um, I'm certainly happy to entertain a motion of support for this request. Obviously, that would be built into the budget that we will at some point vote to support, uh, the budget that's presented at town meetings. So there's, there's no formal step at this point before we would be voting support for the budget that goes into the warrant report, but I'm happy to entertain a motion from the recently elected clerk of the board to, to endorse this as, to be continued to be included in the budget where it's been included so far.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I actually think that's so formal that I think what I hear today, I'll, I'll, I'll do the motion, but more importantly, I think, I think for the three of us, what you've heard is that none of us have any reason why we would not support this. And so more importantly, that we could do a motion, but it's kind of a just a way of saying that. So I move that we, uh, this Board of Selectmen vote to, uh, express their support for the addition of a public health nurse in the FY22 operating budget, uh, in response to the recommendation of the Board of Health.
I would second that and then thank the Board of Health for their great explanation and their great work over the past year.
Mr. Markucci.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Murby, yes.
Terrific. Well, thank you all for coming and really appreciate your efforts on the presentation.
Great. And we appreciate, now we'll start the process, well, a, after town meeting, right? No inter, no, is that how that works?
Thank you so much.
Yeah. I think that the hiring will be done through our ordinary town hiring process as it will be a town employee position under Christine's direction.
Right.
Carol, Carol meant the celebration of the Board of Health.
Right, right. And, um, and I just want to clarify, so we can, we can feel comfortable, your support is, is for next year too. Like we, we don't need to be prepared to come back here and, um, and
Come on, Carol, it all depends who you hire.
Oh, I'm not hiring, but, but it just, you know, you can tell our heart is here for the town. And, um, I guess that means going forward, this will be a position and especially in hiring people and being able to recruit and letting them know that you all three support this as well as Christine. So, um, so I guess that's all a yes.
I mean, I think it's like any other budgetary position, right? We, the town votes to appropriate funds every year. And every year there's a budgetary process. And so there's nobody who has a, a, a claim on taxpayer dollars for a lifetime job beyond this budget. So, I mean, it's, it's a position we're hiring this year. And we'll hire them and then next year we'll have a budget and it'll be part of the ordinary budget process. I think you, you see we have, you have our support and, and, and so I think you could expect that that'll be in there. Um, but we only appropriate year by year.
Yes.
Town meeting, town meeting by town meeting.
That means the world to the town and to us, and we really appreciate it. So.
Oh, I think Carol's frozen.
Now she's gone. Wrong, boy. That was a pretty unceremonious boot out of the Board of Health.
All right. Well, I, I thank you to the Board of Health. Thank you for coming and I hope you're safe wherever you've gone off to.
Don't let the door hit you on the way out.
All right. Um, now we have, um, a request from Jeffrey Petter for a one day beer permit from May, well, I guess one day beer permits on May 14th and June 11th to serve beer at Pollard's Texas Q temporary site at the MSH. I guess he's trying to get it in before our public health nurse comes and says it's bad for you to drink beer and eat barbecue. So, Mr. Petter, welcome.
Hello. I don't know how I quite follow that. I'll be, I'll be aware I might get removed at any moment in time.
All right. So, um, what, what, you just want to describe your request briefly?
Yeah, it's, it's fairly simple request. Um, you were, you approved the Pollard's Texas Q pop up. And I discussed with him last year whether he'd want some beer served to some of the events. And he reached out to me this spring and asked if I would be willing to set up some, a couple of times at his, um, pop up. As you know, we already have, we have a thing on, um, Saturdays or most Saturdays. So these two particular dates, um, either we don't, we don't plan to do anything on Saturday or, um, or I, I can't quite remember. Either way, the, the dates are fairly cleverly picked. Um, but either way, it's, but yeah, they're both Fridays. They're not the same time, um, obviously. And, and it's basically a request to have a, a beer garden or, or outdoor pop up similar to the one we have at the, uh, Meeting House, Park. It doesn't need to be as big, to be honest with you. Um, I don't think it would be. But I know it's municipal land, um, and there was some comment that, um, we might need a police detail there. We don't have a police detail at, um, Meeting House Park because it's, uh, located near the, the center of town. I, I, anyway, that's one of the questions which was there. Otherwise, obviously, we know how to operate a, uh, this kind of event pretty effectively. We've done them in many towns. Anyway, I think it would help his, 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 uh, business at the time that we're there. And give people a chance to be outside. I, the, one other thing is that, uh, one day licenses, so we did not have to apply for one day licenses for the other, uh, location because it's near enough, or at least so I understand. It's near enough our Tapprum location. Um, this one, uh, we'd expect to have to get one day licenses. Which, you know, it's not a big deal for us. If you were to prove it, that is.
Right. Pete, any questions?
Uh, no questions. I think it sounds like a, like a nice idea. Certainly an extra service to the town. Makes the town more interesting. No questions.
Gus?
And my, the, uh, just the police chief's recommendation on this, what, what inputs have we gotten from the police chief?
So, uh, the chief was fine with the idea, but given the location, uh, she would like to have a detail present for the hours that it's operating. Um, she recognizes that we did not request details for the downtown Beer Garden location. However, that location's in the heart of downtown, heavily populated with small businesses and closely associated with the restaurants. She's concerned about being further out of town in terms of a more park picnic-like feel. Uh, she'd like to have a detail officer present.
That's, that's acceptable to you, Jeff.
How much is a police detail? And do you know how long the hours are? Is it, is it four hour sections, I think?
Four hour blocks.
And how much is it? Do you know?
Uh, off the top of my head, I, I, I don't know. I'd have to look it up real quick for you.
Okay.
I mean, my, my, so speaking personally, my, first, my reaction, my inclination would be to follow the police chief's recommendation on something like this. I, I know the, the in how, the in-town thing is, I think, has been very well received. Everything that I know about it in the past year, it was very well conducted. I kind of understand why the police chief has a concern being farther out of town. We're, we're, we're doing this at a spot on a Friday night or Friday afternoon and night, which is actually a gathering place for young people. Uh, you know, a lot of people at the end of the week are going to be in that area. Uh, that doesn't disqualify it for me, but I understand your concerns and I do think this is a little different context than being in downtown where everybody can see things. So I, I, I hope by now you've figured out, I think, all three of our predispositions is to do everything we can to help shore up the businesses in town through this whole process. And speaking personally, I, I often think of your business in particular because of the limits you have on your own location as being probably somebody that hit a little more of the burden. So from a, from a sympathy standpoint, I would like to see anything we can do to help you here. From the standpoint of this particular format, I understand why the police chief feels that way. And I would be inclined to, you know, want to conform with whatever the police chief's recommendations are on this. But other, other than that, I, I'm on board with doing it. That's all I got.
Yeah, I think my reaction is similar to Gus. I think it's a good idea. And again, this is new as well. I think the chief's recommendation is well taken to have a police detail both of these times. And, and if you're going to do this again, beyond that, maybe the experience will suggest it's not necessary or that may change in the future. But I think for, for these first two, I, I think it's going to be the spring. There's going to be a lot of people around, um, a lot more going on. There's likely to be baseball and softball going on at the fields. A good day for you to be there, a good days for probably Texas Q to be there. But I think it would probably be helpful to just keeping everybody, um, you know, within the yellow lines, uh, to have a detail officer there. So I, I would approve this uh, subject to having a detail officer.
Okay, understood.
Any other further questions, comments?
Not for me.
All right. So do you want, do we have a motion?
Sure. I'll, uh, I'll move that, uh, let's see, Zilis beer be allowed to one day beer permits for Friday, May 14th and Friday, June 11th to serve beer at the Pollard's Texas Q temporary pop-up site at the Mass, uh, Medfield State Hospital from 3:00 PM to 8:30 PM, subject to, uh, scheduling a police detail during the hours of operation. That's it.
Second.
Mr. Markucci.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. And so we have next, um, a request from Kim Price and Janie Boylan to decorate Straw Hat Park for the rolling rally. We previously approved the rolling rally. I understand, um, that they're not able to make it. Um, I don't know if there's any questions or concerns from Pete and Gus. I assume this is going to be all Medfield schools paraphernalia and nothing that would kind of run afoul of sort of the restrictions we've placed on putting things in Straw Hat Park. So, um, any questions, Peter, Gus?
It's actually, just to clarify also, it is Straw Hat Park and it is also the fence where the basketball court is, uh, along Dale Street as well.
Okay.
And this, in this, so the, the only questions I would have, one, this is for the day of the, the rolling rally, it goes up and it comes down and it's gone. And, uh, I don't have any reason to think that, I, I realize that Jean Minio may not have an official position on this, uh, in, in her role, but I look to Jean as the steward of Straw Hat Park. And I assume there's absolutely no reason to believe that she or anyone else that's had a direct interest in Straw Hat Park would have any reason to object. So.
I think it was, I think it was decorated, um, last time, last
Did we do it last year? Okay. Yeah. So no question. Then that answers my question.
I don't know that anyone asked permission, but it was, it was, there was some decoration.
Maybe that's why it didn't
Nobody asked forgiveness either.
Right. And I, I don't think, they, no one mentioned anything. So I think it all went well. So I, I would entertain a motion to approve this request.
So I move that we approve the request, uh, from Kim Price and Jamie Boylan for permission to decorate Straw Hat Park for the rolling rally. And the, along with the, uh, the fencing around the basketball courts behind the police station. Is that right? Those are the right ones, Christine?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Markucci.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Murby, yes.
Great. All right. Uh, next one here is CARES COVID-19 status update and CARES funding update.
Uh, we have nothing under that. We're still waiting for guidance on our new, uh, stimulus funding coming in. And hopefully, I'm just going to keep saying it every week. Hopefully, we'll be talking about it next week.
Excellent. All right.
Can, can I make a comment here? And I, I'm, this is a, uh, I'm just setting up a longer term con- conversation around this aid that we have coming in. As I mentioned, I think in our last meeting, there's three categories that this aid can be applied to. Um, obviously we're going to be subject to guidelines, so we don't exactly know what some of those rules are, but I've been giving this issue some thought and I, I would at least recommend that the three of us uh, give some thought to ways that we might make sure that we put some money at the economic stimulus category. Uh, I'm, I'm sensitive to, uh, some businesses here in town. Not necessarily, I'm actually less sensitive to the food and drink businesses than I am to some of the other businesses. Uh, I don't know what the best way to properly do this will be. Uh, but I would, I just want to put out there that we ought to, I think we should be thinking about a, maybe reaching out to the businesses to ask them how we might best as a town help them in this recovery process as we open back up. Uh, I know that we don't, we don't have like a pot of money that we can just unilaterally give to some businesses and not others. So there'll undoubtedly be a process, but whether there's some early thinking that we could get to, for instance, if there's businesses that in order to open back up, have to invest in more protective plexiglass or other sorts of modifications that's, you know, connected directly to this COVID crisis. Uh, if they kept their receipts, that we would be willing to reimburse some portion of that expense based on how much we can allocate and how many claims come in or so. I don't know what the right structure is, but I, I do think, I, I personally, I'm trying to figure out uh, prop, you know, allowable effective ways for us to contribute to that economic stimulation. And as I look around from week to week, I, I become more aware of more and more businesses that have been bearing a pretty serious burden. And I've talked, including some of the, you know, general consumer service businesses and retail businesses. Yeah, they're, they're hanging in there, uh, but it would be good if we had a way of doing something uh, to, to help them out, assuming we get this funding and assume the guy, assuming the guidelines give us the flexibility to do it.
Okay. Cause I, yeah, I, I agree with you guys. And I, I've been giving a fair amount of thought to this as well. And I think there are things we can do in that area. Once we get the guidance that, that probably for a relatively modest investment from the town could have a significant benefit for those businesses. And I think that's, I think that's, that's got to be a part of this. That's got to be a part of this as well. So.
I, I guess I'd invite, if there are businesses that have ideas on how we can help, please send them in. We may not be able to help you, but you know, at least let us know what you think would work.
All right. So our next, uh, item here is fiscal year 2022 operating and capital budgets and financial policies.
Uh, just to let you know, we are working with the Warrant Committee on a balanced budget and we'll be presenting that at the warrant hearing on Thursday evening at seven o'clock.
All right. Uh, 2021 Annual Town Meeting and Warrant Articles.
So we are, I, I'm pleased to say as of today, we're down to 39 articles. So we are getting there. Um, I met with, uh, town moderator, re-elected, newly re-elected town moderator, Dr. McDermott, yesterday. Um, and we are reviewing everything, uh, in terms of warrant articles, what we can put on the consent calendar to move things forward. Um, we are considering all possibilities to see if we can try and do this in one evening versus two. Um, so we're working on the logistics now. I think it would be helpful, uh, starting with our next meeting to start inviting any groups that have warrant articles on there to make their presentations to the Board of Selectmen so that you can start taking your positions on those warrant articles, um, as we get closer to town meeting. So we'll start doing that, uh, next week.
Excellent. Thank you, Christine. All right. Action items. Um, we have three Maurice Goulet contracts. One with Stumpy's Tree Services for townwide tree services, one other with Weston and Sampson for, uh, the chief operator services at our Waste Warner Tribune plan, and finally with Truax Corporation for catch basin cleaning. Pete, do you have any questions on the trio of Goulet contract requests?
Nope.
Gus?
I have one on the, uh, catch basin cleaning. Uh, actually have two on that, just to understand. We got a summary of it. It says quotations were solicited from three local contractors, list them. We're only, we're only contracting with one of those three contractors though. Is that correct? Okay. And then there was a, there was a sentence in that description that said, future contracts will include costs for deposits to be removed from the town. The proposal seemed to have a price for removing the materials in this contract. So initially, when I saw that, I would, my first question was Initially, when I saw that I would, my first question was, why are we waiting for a future contract to do that? And then when I saw the proposal that had a, I think it was twenty six ninety four or something like that rate. It sounded like we were in fact, putting a provision in to do that into this contract. So I just wanted to understand. What the information itself was saying in terms of what we really are doing.
The original intention or what part of the plan was to have items removed, but as. Mo reviewed quotes coming back in, prices came in definitely more expensive than anticipated and this. Back to some of the MS four stormwater requirements from the federal government. So. That is, so by reducing that scope of work, um, the price came down slightly and we're keeping it with the way we have approached this. Work in the past, we maintain those deposits and DPW takes care of it. In the future, the plan would be to just have a contractor remove them when they take.
So in, so then my only question is, I got, let me see if I can find it. In the, in the response, there were two, I don't, I don't care. I just want to understand what we're really doing. In the response, I believe it quoted both a. The, the sixteen forty five for the cleaning and then it also had a quote. For the cleaning and removal of the materials. Are we, are we contracting for both of those?
No.
Or just not going to use the second one?
Or just accepting the sixteen forty five quote.
I got it. Okay, okay. Those are my questions.
All right. I think we should do this by separate motions. Who want to start with the Stumpy's contract, Gus?
Sure. I move that we approve the award of the annual contract for townwide tree services. To Stumpy's Tree Service.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Markucci.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And it's Murray, yes.
All right. Now the Weston and Sampson contract.
Next, I move that we approve the award of the contract for chief operator services. At the wastewater treatment plant to Weston and Sampson. And I believe that was for a three year contract, right?
Yes.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Markucci.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes. That one's approved.
And Truax Corporation.
And Truax Corporation, which is, which is, uh, that's about a year and a half. I'm just trying to get the terms correct here. Was that a year and a half or something like that? I think it was more than just twelve months, right, Nick? You have it off the top of your head? Oops. Actually, I think Truax was at the top. Wait a minute. Just trying to get the period of performance.
For, um, March thirtieth, twenty twenty one through March thirty, twenty twenty two.
Oh, it is just one year. Okay. I, I move that we award the contract for catch basin cleaning for. One year from March thirtieth, twenty twenty one to March thirty, twenty twenty two to Truax Corporation.
Second.
Mr. Markucci.
Hi.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murray, I.
All right. And I think these are all contracts that we are signing. So we don't need to separately authorize anyone to sign them. So we can just have to make our way to town, the townhouse at some point to get these signed. So.
Yeah. Uh, okay, that's it.
The next action item, the gazebo players request permission to use M S H on July twenty fourth and twenty fifth to provide free Shakespeare performances. Do we know where Christine, they're, they're proposing to do this?
They're going to do a walking Shakespeare's greatest hits.
Oh, that's neat.
State hospital grounds and do different productions at different spots. They've emailed John Thompson to clear the dates with him. Uh, and it also started reviewing their protocol with the board of health agent. Uh, and we didn't see any, any reason to not let it go forward.
Excellent. That sounds, sounds like a great idea. Any questions, Pete?
No.
Gus?
No questions.
All right. I'll entertain a motion then.
I, I move that we grant permission to the gazebo players to use the Medfield State Hospital on July twenty fourth and July twenty fifth. To provide free Shakespeare performances. I guess subject to approval of specific locations and usage by. Uh, the state hospital grounds committee and do we need anybody else to pass judgment? I think that's, that's probably all. Yes.
Or the board of health on the health protocols.
COVID protocols.
Okay. And the board of health with regard to health protocols. Yeah, I guess. Okay.
Second.
Mr. Markucci.
Hi.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. Murphy, yes.
All right. Next item, the board of selectmen to vote to direct the school building committee to pursue a net zero building and pursue all options for savings to maximize the return of the town's investment. We obviously had an extended presentation on this issue last Wednesday. And so I guess I'll start by asking if there are further, is there further, are there further questions or discussion from the board, starting with Pete?
No.
Gus?
Yes, no questions. I, I was impressed with the presentation. I was actually. Encouraged by the presentation that we saw on Wednesday in the, in the sense that. Uh, I think over the last several months, we went from. A degree of skepticism on the school building committee that net zero was in fact, a practical possibility. What I think I've heard since then, both, both with the presentation and also. In talking with Mike Quinlan is that as the details of this have come out. It appears that not only, you know, we're not even talking that zero ready anymore is what we might have to settle for. Net zero appears to be an achievable. Uh, design goal for this, for this and, and a, in a feasible approach. That makes, makes sense. Uh, the one, the one qualification I'll make to my support of this is that. Between the presentation that we saw from Mark Sandine from Lexington. In with the example of the school that they did and the relatively small gap. In terms of incremental costs to go with the option that they had for the ground heat pump. Uh, my expectation is that the building committee, probably with the help of the energy committee and with the help of ever source. Will come up with a design for doing this that will result in no net increased cost to the town. So. I'm looking for them to figure out a way to still reduce that million and a half dollar gap. Uh, specifically my, my quick reaction, unqualified, technically unqualified perhaps. But given the comment from Mark Sandine from Lexington, that the reason their project worked. Was because they use battery storage, energy storage technology, and they took advantage of the incentives that are there. The presentation that we saw on Wednesday did not take savings from energy storage into account at all, but there was a projection made. That those benefits could be equivalent to the benefits of the, of the solar power. Uh, so I, I think my expectation is not unreasonable. I think they have a technical path to get there. The main issue it seemed to be that. In the early investigations, they just didn't have the money to explore the storage. I happened to catch Mike Quinlan at the election yesterday. Uh, and it let him know I was going to say something like this tonight and he. Assured me that once the, once this project moves ahead in the design phase, they will in fact be investigating those things. So my expectation is. This will be done without any increased cost to the town.
Thanks, Gus. So I, I have a similar hope and expectation and one option that we have. To kind of ensure that is if we get down to the end and there is some increased cost. Is we could consider pairing it with a modest under ride so that the save the, the, the. Over, if, if the math is that we're going to save money, make this capital investment upfront, save money over time. You might say that, okay, we're going to take that amount of savings as an under ride that would. Make sure those savings in order to the benefit of the taxpayers as opposed to just freeing up more money to be spent. And so I think we're not there yet. But I know that there are, there are a number of different, in, in some, some ways, when people structure. Whether it's, it's tax or, or other kind of incentives that are designed to promote. Reduced usage of, of carbon burning fuels. Some of them return the savings that come from that to the taxpayers opposed to generating. So that, that's just. That was the thought I had. If we have to bridge that gap at the end to say, all right, just to make sure this is genuine, genuine savings to the taxpayers of Medfield. Over time, um, to even that out. If we have that gap is something we could consider and it could be done at the same time. So we're not there yet either. I, I have the same hope that you do. That we can get to the point where this is going to work out and it's not going to be a net additional cost, but, but that's a financing and financial option for us to consider. So I guess I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chair, could I just make a couple of comments before we go on to the motion? I think that I was impressed with the fact that the, the, the analysis from the, the town's consultants had changed from the initial. Presentations on this that initially they were talking about a, a years. A return on investment type of analysis. How many, what's the payback? How many years to get your payback? And, and they seem to have actually adopted the Sandin sort of analysis wholeheartedly. Not only that, but the Arrow Street, Kate, whatever her name is. Seems to have become an expert in the, in the Sandin sort of analysis. Which I think would behoove them in going forward with other school systems and other towns, building schools to. To be able to present this type of analysis in this way. So I, I just was very happy to see that the, the school building committee and also the consultants had come around to. To the, the, the Sandin sort of analysis of the net zero. The other thing, I, I had a conversation with Fred Davis today about the. The P P A. There was this discussion about the. The solar and, and that it should be a power purchase agreement. Fred reminded me of the fact that there's a subcommittee or a working group, I guess it's called of the energy committee. Which has been looking at solar and is recommending to the town, not. A power purchase agreement, but an actual ownership through a hybrid that has been developed that allows the. The tax credits to be generated and, and used by a, a company. A, a party, I guess that would, that pays taxes so that you don't lose the benefit of the, of the tax savings on it. And then, and then it gets turned over after five or six years to the town for, for ownership. But it's a, it's, it's, it's a. It's better for the town based on the analyses that the energy committee has done to have an ownership system. With this, this hybrid model that's now being used generally.
Well, I think they're coming in on April thirteenth to talk about it. I, I will say I'm a skeptic that we should be. Acquiring more capital assets that for which we have to take the responsibility to maintain them. You know, if this, if, if the difference is similar to what we did in the L O D LEDs, in other words, your ownership will save like ninety percent over a P P A. In other words, we'll save a hundred thousand dollars in a P P A or a million dollars on an ownership, then that's kind of a compelling case for ownership. I, I think we always have to take into account the logistics of actually doing this. You know, obviously the three of us aren't going to be the ones actually maintaining these things. Neither is it could be at the energy committee. And so in, in thinking about what our resources are and. We have a lot of capital assets and we've had a challenge, a challenge in maintaining them. And so I would just say, just heading into it, and I think this is not, would not be a surprise to Fred that I'm, I'm a skeptic. That we should be acquiring more of them. Particularly, particularly where the, the long-term. Maintenance costs are unknown, particularly and where we have an option that does provide the benefit, does increase the amount of solar in the world. Which is part of the goals here, um, part of the goal here and does not require the town to take over responsibility for managing those capital assets. So that's coming up on April thirteenth.
It depends on, on the monies and how, how the monies work out.
Yeah.
The, the other comment I have on that point, my, if I followed the presentation correctly la- last Wednesday. I think this entire system is being designed. To meet the power needs, you know, to be appropriate for this, to be adequate to meet the power needs of the school. And to have this thing make economic sense. When I compared that to the extensive solar panel. Uh, canopy work that the Lexington, the town Lexington did. I, I think that if we design this, and I think the building committee is going in the right direction with the design. But it seems to me that there's probably an opportunity for the town to expand that design. Should we decide we want to get into the electric business? And we maybe, even if it's still through P P A, there may be ways we can exploit that land even more. Should we decide to do that? I don't think that's what we should be thinking about right now. But it struck me that if, if we really did for some reason, want to go aggressively after the economics of solar. Generation, I think that there's remaining potential there to do some things down the road if. We think that's a smart thing to do and it makes economic sense. So.
I think there's a huge opportunity for the town to get financial benefit. We, we could have canopies, solar canopy systems over all of our parking lots. I know that. The superintendent didn't, hasn't wanted those at the schools in the past for some reason. But I think that what I saw on the other day at the, the Aggie school over, and it was a huge one. So I.
Yeah, I'm sympathetic to the caution though, you know, you don't want your school parking lots to look like solar farms either, just because they make money. So. There's a, you know, we're building a school here is the first thing. My point is, I think downstream, we might have the flexibility. To expand it, if that makes sense. I, I can understand the caution because what we are doing here is building a school and the school should, that should be the first and foremost purpose.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Uh, I think there are benefits for the school. I mean, you know, if you put the canopy over the park and then you've got. There's no snow that's going to fall on those parking spaces. So that's a benefit to the kids.
Right. So I'll entertain a motion on this point, Gus.
Okay, I, I move that we direct the, the Dale Street School Building Committee. To pursue a net zero building and pursue all options for savings to maximize the return on the town's investments.
Second.
Mr. Markucci.
Hi.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy, I.
The motion carries. Next item, nothing on the consent agenda, town administrator updates.
I just have one thing this evening. Um, I've been talking with Dave Darian of troop ten of the Boy Scouts. And we've been incredibly efficient over the last couple of weeks, getting border health agent to review his plan to do a. On April eleventh, and we've been so efficient, we forgot to ask your permission. So I will put it on the agenda for a formal vote next week, but if you could give me your intentions, he would like to let the scouts know whether or not. They can camp out on April eleventh.
Where?
At the state hospital, sorry. In their, in their normal location, uh, they weren't able to do it last year. They would really like to bring it back this year.
Okay. And this is just their troop? This is not the district campery or anything like that?
Just their camp should be less than fifty people. Uh, he's been working with Bridget on the, the board of health agent, that it will just be families. Uh, and family members in each individual tent. Uh, and we'll follow her COVID protocols.
Up, yeah, they, do you happen to know, are they doing the North Meadow or the North Field or? I'm just curious. That's where they usually go. I'm just curious if you knew where.
Uh, Dave said they're going to be in their usual spot. So if that's the north.
Probably north, okay.
Um, certainly, uh, April tenth, and they will leave Sunday morning on the eleventh. So if it's okay with you, I'll give him the heads up and then we'll do a formal vote next.
Perfect. Sounds good to me. All right. Uh, next meeting dates, the annual warrant hearing is Thursday. I think that's, that is not a command performance for us. I guess in the capable hands of the warrant committee, April sixth, and then I guess Christine, you're just kind of teasing us with the prospect that. We're not going to be meeting on April thirteenth and next week when we get here, you'll be, because I think you couldn't, you already tell me that April thirteenth is when the Medfield Energy Committee is coming in. Right. So this is just like, ha, ha, ha. I'm pretending to give you a week off, but really you're, we're going to be here.
Well, yeah, for me, Christine, that's going to be a problem. I, I took that date seriously. I actually am going to be out of town that week and it's going to be hard for me to join. So.
Okay. Um, I apologize. We will, we will move everybody to a date. Everybody's here.
Okay. Uh, if I will be back. On the, on the fourteenth. So if you, if like that Thursday would work for me, the fifteenth. But I'm, I'm gone. That, that part of the week.
We'll take a look tomorrow because we need to look at all of the warrant articles that need to be spread over the next couple of weeks. So.
Okay. And then, then I have to ask Mike, when you said that the April first warrant, annual warrant hearing is not a command performance, that wasn't an April fool's joke, was it?
We really need to be there. No, we do not. We do not need to be there. It's, it was traditionally held in the middle, as you recall from the board of selectmen meeting. Um, I don't think there's any requirement of that. And so we were all just appearing virtually. I don't, I think I, we're probably welcome, but not required.
You are, yeah, you're, you're welcome. Uh, we posted you just in case you wanted to come and speak, but.
Do I get in trouble if I sign in as Lowell Mason or something?
Yeah, I, I know I will not be there. So. And so, all right, selection reports, Pete.
Uh, I want to thank everybody who came out and voted and, and supported my, my running for select board again. Secondly, the townwide master planning committee met last Thursday and followed the select board's requests to. Poll and, and talk to all the people who are either leading or partnering on the different goals in the. Townwide master plan and most of them have, have signed up to participate as, as they've been suggested to do so. There were two more groups, the historical commission and the conservation commission that we're going to be met with soon. And then there, then the townwide master planning committee is proposing to come back and talk. master planning committee is proposing to come back and talk to the select board again.
Yes.
Yeah. And don't have anything, Pete always manages to be a lot busier on these little short weeks than I am. I, I think the only two minor points I would agree with the election, certainly congratulate all the winners. And, and also congratulate all those who choose to rap, who choose to run. I would point out that Tom Sweeney is a write-in campaign. I caught him when I went to vote yesterday and he mentioned he'd been standing there since 5:30 in the morning. And it was, that's impressive. I, I would, that's not an easy thing to do, even if the weather's not too bad. So I appreciate that. The other thing I appreciated is after I voted, I took a few minutes out in the, in the foyer on the way out and I met three people that I needed to catch up with. And that's just hanging out for five minutes. I managed to get three people that I was looking to catch up with out of the way in no time at all. So that was just sort of a serendipitous magical event at the election yesterday that was great. And the only other point is Nick has graciously updated my score sheet. There's no major changes to that. You know, I, I carry that budget. I, I track that budget score sheet. There are not major changes, but just the thanks to Nick for taking care of that so that I didn't have to figure out how to do it. So I would say it's staying much more in line with the town's official numbers under Nick's stewardship than it ever did when I was doing it on my own with the Warren Committee. So thanks to Nick for that. That's all I have.
All right. I, I, no particular updates for me. The Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees meeting originally scheduled for this Thursday, I think is going to be postponed until next Thursday, April the 8th. And one of the agenda items for that meeting is, is to remove some of the warrant articles they've proposed as well. And so hopefully that 39 number will continue to go down. So. All right. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn. Second? Mr. Markucci?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
And Mr. Murby, aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.